Okay. Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on November 5th. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. And we will start, and please join us if you would care to, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we will go to adoption of today's agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Oh, so moved. A second. Okay, I'm sorry. Thought I'd give you first chance.
Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. We approve the agenda, adopted the agenda. Thank you. And next is public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If any members of the public would like to address any topics, would you please move to the microphone? Seeing nobody move to the microphone, I will close the comment period. Next, we do not have any agents to report. So we'll go to consideration of minutes of the October 29th meeting. And I entertain a motion for approval.
I would move that we approve them with one addition, which is to actually put the date for last week on the minutes.
So of October 29th?
Oh, sorry, October 29th, with the date of October 29th.
Yes. I will second that motion.
And the date is on the minutes themselves, it just wasn't on the agenda item. Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Minutes are approved. Next, we do not have any personnel actions, so we'll go to the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda items.
I move approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
I second.
Okay, discussion? Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. No public hearing items, so we will go to additional items, moving right along. Barb Steinbach has a proposal for us. Good morning, Barb.
Aye. Good morning, board.
Good morning.
We are moving right along. I was like waiting. Here I am.
We know you're busy, so you know.
So I wanted to bring to you this morning a proposal for increasing the bandwidth at our HSC building in Ames. We are, as Community Services will attest, we are running out of bandwidth. And we had been speaking with Orion for quite a while about, hey, you know, once you do our redundant solution for our VoIP system, is there a possibility, maybe, since you're bringing a connection into that building anyway, could we like maybe piggyback onto it and do our network connection through there? Currently, it's through CenturyLink. And so now that's all done, and we're stable. And so they've submitted some pricing for us, and there's, and Loris, thank you for the call. I apologize if this was a little misleading, but there are several different options. There are four different options for us. The first option would double our current capacity for the network at the same price we're currently paying for 10 meg at HSC through CenturyLink. So that's where I would like to start, I think, just by doubling our connection. I think we could get a lot of headway, and we could resolve a lot of the issues. And that would be no budget impact, because that's what we've already budgeted. So if we decide then to move to the second option, there would be a little bit more of a budget consideration. But also, I guess, what I'm asking you is, what are our future plans at HSC? If we're planning to add a lot of staff or filling up some of that empty space, then I might want to consider that next option for our connection there. Does that make sense?
I don't know of any plans to add any new tenants to HSC. Do either of you, or do any of the staff know of any plans that would change usage considerably? I'm seeing heads going back and forth rather than up and down, so I assume we don't know of any. We don't have anything to report.
I actually, the Story County Housing Trust Fund, there might be a request from them just to, if they could ask for a little bit of desk time out of that, depending on who wins the award for the housing trust. One of the people who seem to be well poised to possibly get the administration award actually is out of Des Moines, and they may want to come up every once in a while. So I don't anticipate there being any extreme use.
Possibly one employee part of the week.
Part of the week.
Okay. That doesn't sound like a lot.
Yeah, that's not a lot at all.
Okay, thank you, though.
That wouldn't be a huge impact. And how we segregate our network, so we have the connection coming in, we split half of that out for the guest network, for wireless, and then the other half for our production network. So any visitors coming in would be on the guest network, which, if I went with a $400 option, would just be double what we currently have. Now, the far right-hand corner is a non-recurring charge, that's the installation and the equipment. And I don't have a contract for you to sign, because I wanted to see what option we were going to go with first, and then, once I report that back to Orion, they will submit a contract for us. And it will be a three-year contract, similar to what our VoIP contract is. If we need to upgrade mid-contract, we would sign a new contract, and then that would be a three-year contract.
So the service proposal we have in front of us, MRC is monthly recurring cost, and NRC is non-recurring cost, correct?
Correct.
And there's four lines in the 20. The first one would be option one, which is exactly what we're paying now.
But double the bandwidth.
But double the bandwidth. And you're saying you think that would be okay?
I think, based on, you know, what you think your future plans are, I think, and we don't go over every day, but Carla just walked in, a lot of times when they're trying to do their training, it times out before it actually loads the page. So I think this will resolve that issue and provide us, I don't want to go way overboard and spend the extra money when we don't need to.
We could change it. You said it's a three-year contract, but could we, during that three-year contract, if we decided we need more bandwidth, would they allow us to up that at these rates?
Yes. Yes, it would be an addendum.
Okay, so it wouldn't, so not doing it now doesn't close the door?
No.
Or make it more expensive to?
Exactly. It's kind of a wait-and-see thing.
And have you heard from Barbis, too? I understand it being a three-year contract, what the potential rate might be after three years? Or is that too hard to predict at this particular time?
The competition for network access is so huge, maybe not so much here in Nevada, but in Ames. You know, in three years, CenturyLink might come down and offer a better option.
Gotcha.
So, and that's why they don't do five-year contracts anymore. So, but CenturyLink, I did contact them to say, you know, if we needed to discontinue your service, what would be the options we needed to do? And they just need a 30-day lead time, and then they would send an RMA, and we'd return their equipment, their ADTRAN equipment. So...
And do we have any penalty from CenturyLink if we discontinue our contract? Are we to the end of our contract with them?
CenturyLink, unlike others, does not have a contract per se. They just want a 30-day lead time.
Gotcha, okay.
So, you know, it's not what a lot of the, like Windstream requires, 90 days before the end of your contract, otherwise it automatically renews.
The non-recurring charge, then, of the 125, if we would decide to then, we needed up to like the $600 a month for the 50 meg bytes, do we pay that just one time again?
At the beginning, because that's to install their equipment. That's the...
Oh, that's just an installation charge?
Yes.
And the monthly recurring charge, the difference is 200 a month, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's worth it even if we have to pay it again.
Exactly.
I did not say that, Orion. Okay.
So any other questions for Barb? Any other things we should consider before we vote?
I think it's pretty straightforward. It's something we need to do business, and the options are getting better and better. Just, I was looking back, so five years ago, we were running that entire building with a DSL connection, which many households don't even find enough right now. So we've really come a long way, and so that's why I think the three-year contract is a good way to go.
And I'm hearing you leaning towards option one.
I think, right now, that would suit our needs, yes.
Then I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for consideration of connection from Orion at the Human Services Building with option one, which is the dedicated internet access at 20 MBPPs at $400 plus the $125 installation cost.
I'll second, $400 per month, plus the one-time installation.
Any further discussion? If not, Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. You got it.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Barb. Now, LeAnn Harder will talk with us about the Economic Development Group project funds for 2020.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, LeAnn.
Good morning. I did play a memo on this morning's agenda. The Story County Economic Development Group met on Thursday, October 24th. They had a pool of funding of $16,500 for fiscal year 20 for their project funds. Those are the funds that go to the communities for various types of projects and initiatives, everything from community marketing to directional and local attraction signage. There's a list of A through L on the agenda. The Story County Economic Development Group did recommend funding in the amount of $14,000. Those projects are listed on the back of the memo. I can address further questions. It's communities of Cambridge, Collins, Colo, Huxley, Roland, and Zering. All communities were eligible, except for McCallsburg. They did not meet the meeting requirements for fiscal year 19, hence they cannot qualify for fiscal year 20 funding. Are there any questions?
Just comments?
Go ahead.
So I've been thinking about this, and I was uncomfortable when I heard what two of the requests were, the mulch for the city parks in Roland, and the radio upgrade that Zering requested. And the reason I was uncomfortable is I don't see them as economic development. So one of the things I did is I went back and I looked at what the awards had been for 2017, sorry, 2018 and 2019, because this is actually 2020 awards. And I took a look, and what it came down to is there were several requests for marketing-related, which is clearly identified on the list of what was eligible. There were requests for some upgrade or repairs, et cetera, for physical buildings themselves. And there were a couple of requests to go ahead and fund studies or architectural designs or whatever directly related to an architect, to a development project. But I really did not feel that the mulch and the radio upgrade were appropriate. The mulch, because I sincerely feel that putting down protective layer underneath swings is a responsibility that the cities take on in, I think, in their normal budgets. And I don't see this as greatly attracting any kind of industry or promoting the community anymore. It's kind of a baseline about what a community should do. And the radio upgrade was concerning to me, because even though this is a special type of situation, community betterment, I think, is a definition that's getting stressed, stretched a lot. So, and I also will be talking a little bit about maybe rewording that particular item, if you guys want to go back with the recommendation to them. So I want you to know that I did call both the mayor of Roland and the mayor of Zering yesterday, and told them that I would be voting no on those two projects. However, I had, I said, but remember, there are three of us, so I have no idea what will happen at the board table. I feel that in doing this, we're setting dangerous precedent about anything goes. So both of them actually understood. And I invited them both to come today. They both would be, they aren't working, so if they had no other plans, I said, you can come and plead your case to the board today. And neither one opted to do that, and both said, well, yeah, I guess I understand. Yeah. So these were, let's give it a try. So, those are my comments. Do you have any comments?
No, I will, yes, sorry, I do have comments. I will concur that I have some reservations on the mulch with the city park. The radio upgrades, that was one I did kind of look at probably a little bit differently in seeing that this is a, for a public need. I understand the direction you were going at, Loris. I certainly, certainly see that as well. But I also think it does have broad community impact that they do have those radios. So that one I was a little bit more open on. But I did have concerns about the mulch for the parks as well.
If I might add a little more information just on the radio situation. So last night, I was at the McCallsburg City Council meeting, and discussing economic development, Destin and I went. But one of the comments, as, because the radios come up, it seems like any time that there are city meetings in the small communities, and the new city clerk, who had been here, been at the Story County Economic Development Group meeting, where the recommendation was voted on, said, hey, maybe we could go back and get some money from the county, because this is what Zering did. So I did let them know what I was going to do, once again, making very clear that this may not be what the board decides to do, but that what my vote was going to be and why. And then the other thing is, is that, given, once again, as Zering said at that meeting, where they asked for the money, was that they have to make a decision by December 31st about whether they're signing the leases or not, so, but that was, would still be three equal pay, or three payments, three years worth of payments. And so immediately, McCallsburg thought about, well, we'll ask for the money next year. So I just want to let you know that you, that you would be setting precedent on this, that there's an option, that you'll have other communities coming back and asking for that money.
But not this year, because this is done for these years.
Correct. But I mean, I'm talking about as a precedent centers, precedent there.
Mm-hmm.
Just adding extra confirmation.
LeAnn, the page one of your memo quotes the bylaws as outlining the following types of projects and initiatives. Do the bylaws preclude any other projects or initiatives that could be considered economic development? Does it say this is the sole list?
Yeah, the projects have to meet one of these criteria, one of these categories.
Okay. I have a copy of the bylaws here.
Okay.
The purpose of the Story County Economic Development Group is to encourage economic development in Story County through joint efforts of Story County in the incorporated areas of Story County.
I was just concerned whether it said anything about...
So I think the question comes here, number G, is general community betterment activities. And I think that's so broad that we could get asked by Nevada to do their, help give money to their rodeo next year. I mean, I can think of a lot of requests coming forward, some which would fall just under their basic budget. And we do, you know, as you go through, and I read every place, and now I can't think where it is exactly, but it's here in the, I think, the bylaws or the funding program. It talks about the economic development, and it's not to be just a routine expense that a city would pick up. So, but activities, I think, is the issue here for me.
When you made, you said example of a rodeo. F says that events are not eligible.
Ah, thank you for that. Okay.
So...
What did, I'm sorry, what did you say was in the bylaws? It was not just a...
Is it the bylaws or the funding program part itself? There's the funding program part. But it says something about not being routine infrastructure. That's what it says, okay? Is it shouldn't, is it's not to be routine infrastructure. So as we've looked in the past, even the items that have been done, that have been more capital improvements, project-related, have been some kind of permanence-related rather than general maintenance or routine maintenance. So...
Do you know where the part is on infrastructure?
I'd have to go back and look, sorry. I highlighted it, but...
I'm trying to pull up the bylaws, too.
I think they must be in the bylaws. Not having that marked, starred, and stuff in my highlighters, so...
LeAnn, do you remember how they settled on activities as the word, you know, to be...
It has been worded like that for, probably going back to the original bylaws.
Okay.
I can check. I don't think that was really, the guidelines were not, or the project criteria were not modified to a great degree.
I guess I'm not, I'm not as concerned as you are. I'd look at these, and these are small amounts of money. The Economic Development Group did vote on them, and we asked them for their recommendations. So I understand your point very well, but I'm not sure that I have the level of concern that you do about these two project awards. Any other discussion before I entertain a motion?
I can just, I'll read off what in the last two years' worth of projects were, I'm looking here. Okay. So it was lighting for a flagpole, welcome sign lighting, welcome signage, website development. Two were for flooring for a wellness center, and exterior renovation of a building on Main Street, okay? One was for an analysis and promotion of housing opportunities. Three were for signage or a community bulletin board. That was Kelly, and that's...
Could I interrupt with a question?
Sure.
The last two years, did we have more requests than we had money? Or did they? So...
Yes.
Yeah, we had more.
Okay. I guess that's the other point that I would make, is that we did not have, the requests did not exceed funding. So by approving these, we're not, you know, looking, we're not necessarily denying something that would be more nearly fit into the criteria.
No.
Sorry, go ahead, make your comment, and I'll...
So at that meeting of the Story County Economic Development Group, there was, at least floated the idea about either the amounts going up, or the group itself setting some different impact criteria related to that. So once again, I, from my standpoint, are the requests going to climb again because they see that we have broadened the definitions? I'm really, yeah, that's where I sit. Okay. About what's economic development?
And if we have more requests for more funds than we have, I think then the criteria here become even more important in terms of prioritizing.
Do you think possibly, then, a couple of the communities who didn't apply, if, I'm just going to take it out there, if they thought that we were going to accept something that was clearly off of where the trajectory has been in past years, you know, we might have had more requests? If they don't have one, one year, I applaud the communities out there who went ahead and said, I don't have something right now that fits what has been the track record on this, so I'm not going to apply.
Well, I don't know, because I don't know why some communities didn't apply. I haven't gone and asked them, so I'm not going to speculate.
Okay.
So I guess I just have a clarifying question, and maybe, LeAnn, you can answer this for me. So I'm looking at the bylaws here, and I have A through M, which would be the criteria, right, for what the eligibility criteria that they would fall under. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I've got the most recent.
They added a new one, and if, depending on what you've printed off, it says A through L or A through M. M is actually commercial or industrial, hold on a second here, because I wrote it there, industrial and commercial park preliminary studies.
It's K on this list, so there's something else.
Yeah, so that's what I'm just trying to figure out, because G on, on the requests that's come to us, is G on, here is commercial development. So I'm trying to figure out what's...
And it's general community betterment activities on the memo.
Which is H, but...
Which is G on the memo.
Got it, okay. I did catch there was an M, I just didn't catch that it was... Right, so I'm just figuring out which is the most up-to-date of these, to make sure I know what I am, are the categories.
I used what was used and presented to the Economic Development Group last week, or a couple weeks ago, and I think what is in your hand in the bylaws is the most recent.
For Lisa, with L is the last one.
But no, I have M as the last one.
You have M as the last one.
So M is the last one, and it's referencing G.
It would be H.
That would be H instead. Commercial development. I understand it would be H. But if this is the most recent, and this is what we're going off of, but this says G, then they're not matched up, because G is commercial development.
Yeah, I think what the chairman used, an older list for that, when he put those...
Could I quickly read off what I've got?
The Economic Development Group.
Sure. Okay, because you've got one with M typed in, correct?
Yes.
And I'll read off what I've got that has L as the last one. Community marketing and prospecting, development of promotional materials, consulting and planning services, D speculative buildings, E financial incentives, F tourism attractions, G general community betterment, H Main Street projects, which are part of a planned community project, including but not limited to such things as streetscaping, blah blah, welcome signage and community entrance beautification, J is community-driven housing promotion, including but not limited to housing assessments, K industrial park and commercial park preliminary studies, and L directional and local attraction signage.
That's what's in LeAnn's memo.
Right, also. But so, did, what did we get for M, or whatever?
Well, M has that, but it starts, this one starts with A is economic development, staff and administration.
Oh.
So your A started with B, with B on this list.
Got it. That's why I'm looking at this with all...
And I'm trying to find out what the chair of the Economic Development Group, which bylaws, or which, where he took that list from.
Okay, regardless, the eligibility criteria may differ on the memo that we have from you, LeAnn, depending on which list we're looking at, but they're still all there.
Right.
And G is general community betterment activities, as it is on the memo, and it may be different, but it's in there. So it's not as if we don't have all the content, it's just whether, what list they were looking at when they coded them. So I don't see that as being a big problem. I don't see that as something that stops us from moving forward on this.
He used the list from 2016, and then in 2018, they were amended to include and reword, as what's currently reported.
So currently before us is what he used then.
In the memo I prepared, right.
But not that, that's the actual bylaws that were passed.
But the only difference is that the lettering is off one, because they added something as A.
Well, yeah. Okay, I guess I'm confused now, sorry. So, so this is your memo, but the actual bylaws that have A, or I, and where, where commercial develop, or general community betterment would actually be H, not G. That is the accurate one.
Yes. They're all off by one, because they added it as A. So you just take the letter down one more, and you'll have the correct one in the bylaws.
So...
That's the only...
Moving forward, LeAnn, if you'd let Drew know...
I will.
...to pull out the most recent bylaws.
So is there any further discussion or any questions of LeAnn?
I do, I would concur. I think the term general community betterment is a bit... I do. I would concur. I think the term general community betterment is a bit broad and ambiguous on there. You could certainly argue it either way. I mean, if someone came forward, they could say, well, doing this is general community betterment. It's all in how you kind of look at it. I think it would be potentially good for us to maybe moving forward to look at that particular criteria to make sure is that do we want it that broad? Maybe we do and that's fine. I just think it makes it a little bit more challenging when it is that broad and it's open for interpretation.
So that would be discussion we would want to have with them because it's the bylaws of that group. It's not our document.
Right, right, right. And I actually think Drew mentioned that in that meeting of talking about that particular category was was kind of broad. That probably does need to be looked at. The question is, does it meet the general criteria of how it's written now? That's what you have to toy with. That's my comments.
I think I would feel differently if we had 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 more requests and they'd exceeded the amount available. Since they didn't even come up to the amount available, I'm willing to be rather generous on definitions. And if if some year we have that kind of a proposal and we have many others that are just very clearly economic development, I can see that being how we how prioritizing and ranking would be done, but I don't see the need to do that this year.
I guess I based what you just said, just to let you know that as I did my research on this, I found an email exchange with Ben Scottney Young, who was then mayor of Cambridge. And the discussion was about he was thinking maybe they should get away with these pool or project grants at all and instead just divide the money among the communities. And the term I believe he used was to remove the stress of us having to compete against each other when the requests exceed the amount of money, okay, which is what has been the situation. So I'm just going to point out that approving these two requests opens that parameter up that if there are more requests and they exceed the amount of money next year, that that's friction. So that was something that was discussed by the group in the past is about even when when too many requests come in. So by setting it, you could open up for another whole layer of discussion among that group about, well, if his mulch is okay, why is mine not important?
You know what that makes me think we might do is separate the discussion of this request here in dealing with it with the future of this program. And maybe schedule a discussion, just a discussion to talk about what are our goals? How do we feel about the program? I don't know. I can't remember how long it's been going, but do this is something we want to continue as a budget item. That might be, I think we're getting into the kind of getting into that and I would see that as a separate discussion.
I think that would really be a good idea, too, because I'd already had asked Leanne for as we move into the New York or budget time for us to discuss the urban renewal area, kind of just the economic policies in general. So that would fit right in.
Yeah, because we have several small grant programs and and to say, you know, just because we decided to do these or, you know, another board decided to do them at one point, are they still meeting their purpose? And that's a bigger discussion and yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. Supervisor Edens?
No, yeah, I think that.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion or we can continue. But if there isn't, I'd entertain a motion on the project fund applications to approve as they were listed or to approve part of the list, whatever motion somebody would like to make.
I would move that we approve the project fund request for Cambridge, Collins, Colo and Huxley.
For a total of?
Well, that'd be $9,500.
And then what would happen to the remainder, just for clarification?
It would be split evenly. The group had already decided to take the leftover $2,000 or $2,500, correct, that was voted on at the meeting.
That would be coming that'll be coming forward to the board for future consent action to add that to the base of the allocation for the communities.
So then this would, I assume, would be the motion.
Okay, just just for clarification, so with your motion with $9,500, so the additional dollars would then go back to all five or just the four?
All the 13.
Oh, 13, oh, 13 then. Okay, okay, that's where I was.
So it'll be, would it go into the per capita funds?
It's going to go into the base, yes.
Is the base. So that means it's not evenly divided.
Oh, it is. The base is evenly.
The base is evenly divided. It's per capita funds.
That's basically.
Gotcha. Is there a second then?
I'm pondering for a moment on this, so you gotta give me a minute while I'm I'm just kind of doing my calculations here.
Sure.
So if it goes into the base, does that increase than their ask? It increases their base amount for the next year? Is that?
No.
No, just for?
There's a total of $110,000 budgeted. $16,500 is pulled out, a maximum of $16,500 is pulled out for the project funds. And then from that, the per capita and the base are set. So this would just be divided by this amount, whatever it would be, 2,500 plus 45, so 7,000 would be divided by 13 and then added back to the base amount. Still, yeah, not exceeding the 110,000.
Stay in the base. It doesn't carry over for the next year's for the base amount then because that's just the that's what I generally worked with. Once it's in the base, it stays in the base. That's what I wanted to I wanted to see clarification.
Next year we'll reset because every year is depending on the criteria that are set the communities are eligible to.
For example, if a community doesn't show up to enough of the meetings.
Right, right, that I that I got.
It's just how it is going to the base. I'm used to something if it's into the base, it's into the base.
So it adds about 550 to the base.
Rolls over. Nope. No, it doesn't roll over. Okay.
So it adds about 550 to the base for each community.
I'm stuck on the term community betterment activities because it is so broad. Is is where I'm 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 at since we have. And do Roland and Ziering technically meet that criteria? Technically, they do. And I think, yeah, I think they technically meet that criteria at this particular time.
Does the motion die for lack of a second?
Yes.
Chair would entertain another motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the community projects for Cambridge, Collins, Colo, Huxley, Roland and Ziering as presented.
Is there a second?
Not for me.
I will second the motion. Further discussion?
My only thing is I'd like to direct the that committee to really look at G because I do think it is pretty broad. But I just feel because of it, how it is written in my mind, it those two items do meet that particular criteria and if that is not the intent of what we'd like, then I think that needs to be narrowed down further.
Yes, we'll direct the Story County Economic Development Group to review criteria G for strengthening. Is that significantly what you've said?
Strengthening or narrowing down the criteria.
Narrowing.
Because it is awfully broad.
Okay, I've. Any further discussion?
Just on with with what Lisa just said and what we'd said earlier that, you know, maybe we want to delay that formally until we have that broader discussion about our intent.
Sure, yeah, okay.
The next meeting of the Economic Development Group is will be January.
Yeah. Okay, and then any further discussion? If not, Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Then we will go on. Anything else, Leanne?
Not for that one.
Okay, then we will go on to discussion and consideration of adding an assistant roads maintenance superintendent position, equipment operator one position and temporary equipment operator one positions. Darren Mullin and Alyssa Wignall. We getting ready for winter?
Yeah, too soon. And I'm battling cold. I'm at the end of it, so I have a coughing attack. That's why I got up and walked out. Okay, why I'm here, as I mentioned once before, I was hoping to have this discussion as part of our budget session, but I think I told you in my last quarterly report, we knew we had two employees that were going to be gone on extended leave. We have one or two more since then, so we're kind of a little bit in a crisis here and getting some more bodies to drive trucks pretty much is what we're looking at now. I've shown you this before. This is a snapshot back in the year 2000. Nothing special about that year other than I happened to find this sheet. This was the breakdown of our office. We had six in engineering. That's kind of still how we're broken out. The civil engineering trainee, that's been lowered a bit to just a technician at this point. We no longer hire these three co-op students. So not much has changed there. Maintenance has dropped six employees. The ones that are highlighted are the positions that were dropped. The big one and the one I'm asking to have returned is assistant maintenance superintendent. And then five other positions have been dropped since the year 2000. So we had 39 employees in the year 2000 and now we're down to 33. I did a quick check of surrounding counties, Boone, Marshall. It all averages about 32 maintenance employees where we have 27. So we're lower than most. Then you get Dallas, I showed 55 and Polk. That we don't really consider Polka County. They're kind of a public works, a different situation there. So we seem to be a bit lower than most. Similar size in traffic. Would point out these reductions were not due to a lack of work. They were simply our budget did not allow us to continue with that many employees. There's restrictions on how much the board can levy for roads and the fuel tax had not increased in many years and it was not keeping up with inflation. I'll get into that a little bit later. So the main position I'm asking for right now, when this position was dropped out, it wasn't really meant to be permanent. We kept it on the books and it just the fuel tax never got increased, so it just kind of sat there forever. I don't know how many years, just three years ago or so, it finally fell off the books, but it was intended to come back. Difficulty with just having one employee that would oversee all 26 maintenance employees, that ratio is not good. It's it's difficult for that to do. It's year round in the summer, has a lot of duties, but when we get to real difficulty is in the winter. This is the only position really responsible to go out and check the roads at two or three o'clock in the morning, almost every morning, and that's already started this year. So it's hard for them to do that and then manage the rest of the day with these employees. Tyler and I have assisted quite a bit the past few years with that, but it's getting to be a bit bit much. And before I get off of this page, I just wanted to point out this position right here is filled with the tech right now and he's going to be taking, starting in January, I think 17 weeks of military leave and he's going to be doing that again next year. So we're shorter in engineering side, too, so we need to focus more on the engineering side of things in the near future. And I'll also point out this checking roads is not just the five day a week thing. It's every day of the week. So weekends are included and just this morning Andrew asked, he needs to go somewhere next weekend and I am gone as well, so that continues to be a problem every every winter.
I'd just like to make a note since it was not Andrew I rode with, but the previous road maintenance superintendent, but I did do that, got up and got out there and rode with him and in almost an entire four hours, I think, and then I switched over to with one of the plows. And he's out there by they are out there by themselves and they are having to assess and move to another area and assess and move to another area and his radio went constantly while it was there. So just even before he gets in to do the other part of the job. I just want to say I understand this.
I'll just give you a little more background on how we reduced this back in 2000. Again, we had 13 mortar grader districts and that's how they were broken out. I did hear, wasn't too long before this, I think they had 16 districts, what I'm told. I can't find a map of that ever, but. So this is what we had in 2000. And then now in 2019, we brought that back to 10. So before each district had about 55 miles to maintain and now we're up to about 70 plus miles for each district. These positions, they need to be filled in in the winter, especially when we get a good snow and wind. It takes them all day to get through that district just once, plowing through the drift. So essentially rural residents are stuck in their homes until they get through. So we cannot go without a district operator. The good thing is we have increased our mortar grader purchasing through the lease situation. So we have better mortar grader equipment and that's part of why we did did the lease. So we had very reliable equipment because they cannot be down because we have to get through those districts. As an example, last February, these 10 mortar grader operators essentially worked the entire month. I don't know if we even got a week weekend off hardly, so they have to be filled constantly. We did get, you know, we when we get the blizzard conditions, we get complaints. I just one one complaint I wanted to point out that was pretty consistent. I think we have four pet daycare operations all in the south part of the county. Every single one of those called and complained and they were very vocal, let me tell you that. They feel they need additional service because people need to get out there right away. We just can't provide that service. When the mortar grader goes out, they got to work in a pattern all the way through. And sometimes this part of the county is left till last. That might be the end of the day. But I just want to give you some sort of feel on what we deal with out in the rural area. Moving on to the truck routes, we have 10 mortar grader routes and we've dropped it to 12. It's historically been 13 truck routes, but we've done, we've dropped one out and that 13th is kind of a floater because it almost somebody's always gone, sick vacation. So that floater is always filling in for somebody else. So we do have one spare at this point. But as we talked about last week with the DOT, we're going to gain three miles with that new interchange and a number of miles we've paved recently and are going to pave in the near future. So that adds, I think, nine to 10 new miles. So that's almost going to fill that 13th district again. Moving on to our current staff breakdown, this is what it looks like. Again, engineering hasn't changed much and then the superintendent is here, oversees all the employees in maintenance. These are the 10 mortar grader operators. They're essentially in those districts year round, blading gravel in the summer and plowing in the winter and taking care of the district when they have downtime. These are essentially are more like entry level, the labor type. There's only five of those. These four truck drivers essentially haul rock year round, the heavy haulers. And then they they have a snow route in the winter, but so they're hauling year round. So they can't really help much with the crew leaders. These are the four crew leaders. These are the ones that are always asking for these five guys to help them. This person's our newest. He was essentially filling the rock shoulders almost all summer. That's a safety issue we have when we pavement has a drop off on the edge. He's filling rocks. So that pretty much took up his whole time this summer. So that left with four, that's one each, especially with the first two crew leaders there, the excavator operators. They're constantly digging dirt out of ditches and filling in these trucks. If they only have one truck, that truck has to drive and find somewhere to dump the dirt and come back. So it's not very time efficient. So these two in particular, they always ask for at least two operators. So we're. So these two in particular, they always ask for at least two operators, so we're really short in the summer months as well, when it comes to operator ones. And then the tile crew leader and the sign crew, they, for safety reasons, the tile crew needs two people out there, and Brett oftentimes needs help on the safety with putting up signs. Where we have some backup, if we're short in the winter with the snow plow routes, we can pull the assistant mechanic out to drive truck. We can pull Dave, the inventory coordinator, he's kind of our shop foreman, inventory coordinator. He can also drive truck. Everybody else has a plow route, so it's really two, possibly three, we could put Charlie there, but when we are out plowing, it seems like we always have some mechanical issue that's being checked out, so we really need somebody available to check on that stuff in a short timeframe. So that gets us to why we're asking, we have at least three employees now in maintenance. The fourth one was on the engineering side, but three are currently scheduled to be gone in the January, February timeframe. Two of those are mortar grader operators. Fortunately, we have some of our staff that can drive mortar graders, because we can't go without, so we'll fill the mortar grader positions, and then that'll leave open truck driver routes. There is potential, we've heard rumors of one or two more that have applied for some FMNA, but we're not sure if that's going to happen or not. And then we always have some out on vacation or sick leave any given day. Like I mentioned, we have the backup truck drivers that, but beyond that, we'd see a reduced level in our service without additional help. Getting into the budget side a little bit. This is the main position I'd like to get filled first, and going back to this, that would be the third position that could help out. This new position where we put a CDL requirement in there, so on as-needed basis, they could drive a truck as well and help out, so that would be the extra person if you, that won't be just a management-only position. Worst-case scenario, budget-wise, $72,000 base salary, and then if they took the full family health insurance package, that's what we'd come up to for a total dollar amount. That's what it would be just to fill out the rest of this fiscal year. Now, if we want to go ahead with the equipment operator one, or do a temporary, December to April, temporary position, this is what the breakdown would be for those. My concern with the temporary is, you still hear the ads on the radio from the DOT, they're still looking for these people, and they were supposed to start in October, so they're still advertising, so that tells me they're not finding their temporary help like they normally do. So if we go this extra step, I would almost like to advertise both. We're going to get more applicants for the full-time position, but if we actually do get applications for these, we could just go this route and not fill this, but we kind of need to get somebody, at least one onboard by December, or the end of December, I would say. We can't just throw this, truck drivers out in a truck that takes some training, they have to be put into our drug and alcohol testing pool, and they need to get familiar with that route. There's stuff out there you can hit with plows that you don't see when it snows, so it takes some familiarity, so it's not just something you can pull in when needed, that's a really tough thing to do, to get them trained properly. Going to the budget side, this is kind of an internal spreadsheet we use for our budget. The top side is all the revenue side, and then we have expenses on the bottom. The two big ones are fuel tax, road use tax up here. Time 21 was kind of the first increase, I think that was about 10 years ago, so we're seeing about $500,000 come in for the time 21. And then the fuel tax increased in 2015, which boosted this top number, probably another $400,000 to $500,000. So we're seeing close to an additional $1 million than we used to see, so that really has helped. Then the other big part about revenues is the local property taxes down here. That's something I'll probably touch on a little bit more in our budget session. There's probably a little bit more the board has room to do there if you'd like to, and I'll show you some stats from that later on.
So, and can I just, I'm looking out at Lisa Markley there. So Lisa, if you could help me, because you're so good with just remembering all of these different, we went at 75% again for this year's budget for road, okay, thank you.
We used 75% of what we could have used per law of our revenue taxes.
Now, on the expense side, roadway construction has been high the past few years. Some of that has to do is because of the fuel tax increase gave us some additional money. We've averaged about $400,000 to $500,000 over the past 10 to 15 years, but past few years has been really high, but we've got some construction projects done, so that's good. One thing I'd point out, we bonded after the, our local budget was approved last year, so we had $750,000 in for 560th Avenue paving down by Huxley, but then the bonding essentially is going to pay for that now, so we have an additional $750 in our budget. I've already taken that out of the 1.9, that was up to 2.7. What I'm pointing out is that just going to boost up our ending fund balance by $750,000. The other thing I wanted to point out is we have $600,000, that project is in here, $600,000 bridge project, but that's going to get reimbursed the next year back into our budget, so that'll boost that up even another $600,000. So budget-wise, we've never been in a position that we could actually afford these more than now, so I think we're finally in a position where we could add a couple positions in, if not one at least. So, and we can talk about it more in the budget session where we want to go permanently in the future, but we've got to get at least one onboard, if not two, in the short term.
What I heard you saying, there's three positions listed, but you're asking for the Assistant Roads Maintenance Superintendent position, and then permission to hire either, get Equipment Operator One, either permanent or temporary?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Not three positions, two.
Now, if we got a lot of temporary applications, maybe we could hire two of the temps and not, but we'll see what the apps come in, and we'll come back to the board with that.
I think the staffing levels warrant an Equipment Operator One position when we're looking at some different information. The question is whether one Equipment Operator is going to make it through the, get them through the winter, I think.
Yeah.
And that, that's an unknown. I did go back through and kind of look at our leave totals over the last three years for the maintenance employees, it's pretty consistent in what they use in sick leave and vacation, so this isn't just a situation where they took a lot last year and we didn't have enough staffing. I looked at three years, and it's pretty consistent between vacation and sick leave of what they use. And I just did an analysis over, from the beginning of November through the end of March.
So Darren, when you answered my question, I heard you then add in, or two temporaries?
Yes, if we get a bunch of applications, that would be ideal, but...
So you're asking for some leeway?
Yeah, I think we at least posted at this point with the intention of getting one, and if we get a lot of good applicants, we'll come back to the board and see where you'd like to go with that.
One meaning for the temporaries, or one for the positions, permanent ones? So, because I'm, sorry, I just got a little lost there.
I think we'll get applications for the Equipment Operator One.
Okay.
I'm not confident we'll get any on the temps. So we can either just move forward, assuming we're going to fill the one and forget about the temps, or put them both out there and see what we get. But like Alyssa said, I think it's time, we do need another Operator One year-round. It's just a need we have, and the budget can't handle it now.
And is that where you were saying, that that's what the DOT is still advertising for, for that position?
They do temps, yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So if we were to authorize the Assistant Roads Maintenance Superintendent position and two Equipment Operators and leave off whether they're permanent or temporary?
You need to post it as one or the other.
We need to post them as one or the other.
Absolutely. We wouldn't want to get anybody and hire them and then determine that it's only temporary.
Right.
And adding a temporary person does not put somebody into next year's budget, whereas a permanent position would. So maybe what we would want to do is authorize two permanent positions plus temporary employees as needed.
Well, that would be my recommendation to the board, would be to add the two positions and then allow the engineer to advertise for temporary help. He may not fill that, those temporary positions based on the applications that he receives. There is, there will be enough work this winter with the individuals that are out on leave to utilize the temporary help.
So just so I'm clear, on the two, it's one Assistant Roads Maintenance Superintendent and one Equipment Operations, and then, and so not two, I mean, I understand two equipment, but those would be two permanent, and then separately would be for the temporary. I just want to make sure I'm clear as we're...
And his authorized positions will go up by two FTEs. The temporary help, typically how that's handled in budget time, we just budget the amount of temporary help, and they decide how many temporarys based on, you know, the applications, whether they get two or three. This wouldn't be any different than the summer help, in my opinion, but it may help them get through this winter if he would get the applicants. And it would also give them an idea of what capacity it takes during the winter to, it's hard to tell when you have employees that are out on leave, because the other employees are just putting in extra overtime or additional work to compensate for this.
I think the Assistant Roads Maintenance Superintendent position is needed, because that's a huge span of control, particularly when people may be working around the clock sometimes, and in seven days a week. I think that span of control is way too large, so I'm...
I was coming to the board with that request regardless of the shortfall we got right now, so...
And that's been, I mean, those discussions have been going on for quite a few years.
And also, what you're talking about, having the number of employees, I mean, you're already down, you're already down Equipment Operators even before you have these leaves coming up, four that are confirmed. So I think putting in two permanent positions now is called for, and I also was reading about the I-29 closure and what they're doing, you know, for the flooding in southwest Iowa. There's an article in the Register this weekend, and they were talking about how this winter that's coming up is projected to be, or predicted to be, a wetter winter.
I've heard that. I've heard the opposite.
And we know what that means, when it gets cold and it gets wet. So I can't, and just knowing what we went through last year, and then the frost boils after everything else, and I just think you're going to be...
You just can't predict it, and it's, you can't just pick somebody up short-term and put them out on a plow, so we got to plan ahead.
Yeah. I think bringing it, personally, I'm glad you brought this now rather than waiting until budget time, because budget time could have been too late to get people trained and ready to go, so...
I guess what really has impacted my decision on this has been the fact about how many we have gone down in the last 10 years, and it's very, it's becoming very clear even with switching to our leasing our equipment, et cetera, that we are still not able to provide the level of service we want to provide, okay? Also, it was quite a surprise to me that on any given day, there's one, if not two, employees gone. So that's clear that, yeah, we're having to put in the overtime or whatever. I do kind of want to really emphasize, though, this is an additional $177,000 to the budget year after year. I mean, these are permanent positions. So whether it snows this year or not, heavy or not, it may snow heavily next year, or we may have no snow next year, you know, that we're really looking at adding two permanent positions to it. On my running spreadsheet, as everybody knows, I am, that I keep, in addition to what we've got this year, is I look at what are we adding to next year's annual expenses? And if everybody gets every position that I've heard they may be thinking about, et cetera, along with some additional funding requests that we're going to get for an increase in funding from the entities, I'm now just under a $1 million increase. Remember, there's nothing official about this, okay? This is just my running spreadsheet, just to kind of figure out where we are. So I do want to note this, and, you know, and this is about 20% of it, so...
I did forget to point out, you bring that up, it's around, it's going to be $4 million plus our fund balance. We like that to be about $1 million and a half is kind of our bottom, and that's kind of where we like to be. So we need to bring that down some over the years, so we could do that very easily for quite a few years without, you know, any additional taxes or levies. So that room is there, that hasn't been there for many years.
How did we get so high on that? I always, I've been assuming that that's money that we're just carrying forward, because we didn't get a project done in one fiscal year, so it's moving to the next fiscal year, but you're saying this is a permanent kind of buildup?
The fuel tax, a lot to do with it. We've gotten all the projects done. They've come in cheaper, we've saved a lot of money on fuel, hasn't been as expensive as we've budgeted for. That was a big number that keeps adding up every year. It's just, us not spending as much as we think to, and think we would in our budget is really what it comes down to.
So does this allow, in the spring and summer then, would this allow you to take on an extra road or a couple of extra culvert projects if we added these two people?
Oh yeah, there's still room to do some of that, and I've already added, increased in our rock budget for next year. That room is there as well, otherwise, I'm very reluctant to add employees if we can't do our base services, so, and that still needs to be done.
And I think the additional staff will help as far as during the summer, it's not just winter. I know I've heard you talk about the winter months. There's still a little bit of a shortfall of staffing during the summer to get those projects done. You pointed out, those crew leaders need those Equipment Operators to assist them on different projects. So that's where the Equipment Operator One position comes in, during those non-winter months. That's why there is a request for a full-time employee.
And I think we can't just be reticent to ever add permanent employees. Permanent doesn't mean that position is going to be there forever. You go back and look at 2000, and there were several employees in secondary roads that, positions that aren't there now. There's retirements, there's attrition, those kind of things. So good managers looking all the time at what is my need, when is a position comes open, do I need to fill it? And obviously Darren's done that, and he's looked at revenues, you know, where the revenues were in the past. So you don't, it doesn't mean that the positions will be there forever, but it means that if you make it a permanent position rather than a temporary position, you're more likely to keep a good trained employee, and they'll be there when you do need them. So I'm, I understand exactly what you're saying, Lars, because I imagine we will get lots of requests. I've heard of some requests as well, but that doesn't mean we're going to grant all the requests. That's, our job is to figure out which ones are essential. So, Lisa, any more thoughts?
No, I just appreciate you bringing it forward to us at this particular point.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion for, I'll make sure I make this correct, that we move forward, or that we ask Darren to move forward with Alyssa, in posting and hiring for an Assistant Roads Maintenance Superintendent and in Equipment Operators One position. And then did you also want and, and for, or to post for a temporary, temporary positions, temporary help?
I second. Any further discussion? If not, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now go hire some people. Okay. Next, we have Leanne Harder again for consideration of the RFP for Housing Study and Needs Assessment, Four Storey County, Iowa. Hi, Leanne, again.
Hello again. So wellness session, up and moving around. This item has been discussed at the board table a couple times, and earlier this fall, I received direction from the board to bring it forward in draft format, and so that is why I'm here today. I did share it with entities prior, so as we go through, I'll note the comments that were received on today's agenda, so you can see how it's differed from in the past. This is a request for proposal for Housing Study and Needs Assessment. The last one, actually, it looks like this, was done in 1998 by a consultant out of Des Moines and Omaha. The draft proposed RFP does follow the guidance that we have for RFP's Request for Proposals in Story County. I'm going to just quickly go through some of the highlights. We would, if approved today, it would be released today and tomorrow online as soon We would, if approved today, it would be released today and tomorrow online as soon as I can, today and tomorrow, let me, give me some leeway. Proposals are due December 13th. It starts out, it has a scope of services on page two. I do wanna note the second paragraph and third paragraph under scope of services is the addition of Supervisor Olson, addressing how we fit in the city of Ames data and into this, as well as that collected by the Iowa Finance Authority. Also noting that a separate quote to include the items one through seven along with the, the draft proposal. And then the section does ask for eight specific topic items be addressed in the, the report. And so the, the, the expectation is a consultant will outline a conceptual plan on how these, the data will be collected, presented in addition to other information. It's everything from population demographic review and projections through 2040. I am recommended 2040, our C2C comprehensive plan, our cornerstone to capstone goes out to 2036, so I think that's a logical year. That also may allow us to revisit this sooner rather than later using the 2020 census data, which we're in a kind of a timing, interesting timing that this will use 2010 census data and, and updates throughout, but again, based on 2010 census. So going out to 2040 does give us some latitude. I do wanna know, under Population Demographic Supervisor Heddins did ask that we include a poverty rate, so I added that in. And then under Housing Market Analysis, which is item number two, same thing, under Group Quarter and Facility Housing and Transitional Subsidies and Special Needs Housing, we added some language addressing obstacles to permanent housing, including but not limited to income limitations and impacts. Those are specialized populations that, that as the housing market analysis is, is completed, we want them to look and dive into that in greater detail. Item number three is Housing Demand and Vacancy Rate, both owner occupied and rental housing. Item number four is Existing Housing Conditions. And Supervisor Olson did ask for a narrative on how suspected substandard units are identified by each community and then drive-by inspections of at least, a narrative on drive-by expect, drive-by inspections of at least 15 of the substandard units. Again, all communities except for Ames, but we have that other request for a quote, looking at Ames and, and some greater detail. Number five is the Economic Profiles and Projections, again, through 2040. Number six, yeah, number six is the gap analysis for each community. Number seven is a barriers analysis and then section eight is the recommendations that the consultant would put forth. The next part of the proposal is the general scope of work and then the definitions section. I felt it was important to include just two definitions, affordable housing using HUD's definition and then the cost burden definitions. The conceptual plan and proposal submittal requirements are outlined, what the, the proposals must include in order to be considered complete and meet the requirements, as well as the process and details. Regarding the process, we're gonna follow the, the template we followed in many different instances. We will not meet personally with potential consultants, rather they have from today through November 22nd to email me with questions. I will not respond upon, I'll, I'll respond simply thank you for your email, but following that, we'll put online all the questions and responses and then email them directly out. So everyone gets the same information at the same time to maintain consistency in, in our discussions. The estimated timeline is incorporated as well. We do it, just jumping way ahead of anticipate effective start of the contract for January 29th of 2020, some flexibility as needed. How we'll select this, we'll have a review committee I'm recommending to the, the board. Sandra does not know this yet, but she's proposed to be on that, as well as John Hall and Dustin with Ames Economic Development, a representative from the Planning and Development Department as well, myself and actually Carla does not know this either, but someone from Community Services I think would be beneficial to incorporate into that review committee. Those individuals will review the proposals that were submitted and then, not knowing how many proposals will be received, based on scoring criteria, recommend entities to come do presentations to the Board of Supervisors. And that will be held at a, a meeting in early part of January. So with that, do you have any additional questions for me?
Are we paying for it?
There is, there will be funding avail, this is a non-budgeted item, but I did speak with Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley and there are funds available in this current fiscal year. Trying not to give out too much. Trying not to have her slap my hand.
My response was, there are assigned funds in the small community funding that's uncommitted at this point in time. The estimated balance of that is about $250,000. I don't know what other requests are out there. It is an unbudgeted item, so if it's going to be approved, we're gonna need to amend the budget for this and we're gonna, if that's the case, my, my preference would be we remove it from the assigned small community funding bucket of money to this project, if that's how you wanna fund it.
Okay.
It's general fund dollars.
Thank you.
LeAnn, I would, I know you don't want too large of a review committee, okay? But I'd be interested in having possibly, if a mayor or city clerk from one of the smaller communities would be available to serve also, because while Dustin does serve the small communities and John, but both Dustin and John are from the AAEDC. And so I'd like to see that we've got more of a citizen rep and that would, might take care of both to have either, or, or a city council, let them, you know, decide, but reaching out and we can, I can give a couple of suggestions based upon mayors that are already looking at, really involved in, in housing or, or the city clerks, so.
My one question is, I know you mentioned you've got about $250,000 or so in the small mini-funding budget allocation. How much are we thinking that we're gonna need to utilize for this?
Forty to 60,000 is still what I'm operating on. We've discussed kind of that number.
I just couldn't recall, so thank you.
And that's the reason also that Ames is split out.
Right.
Because as we've struggled through this, through the previous board, et cetera, also, is that Ames is collecting a lot of this information separately because of their 2040 plan.
Right.
And then IFA has collected or whatever, so as you read...
I remembered that, we thought we'd merge that together.
Merge it, yeah, and stuff, but we wanna know, just, just in case that Ames isn't where they think it is. I know Vanessa Baker-Latimer had a December 31st deadline on some of her reports, so.
Thanks, I just could not recall the dollar amount, so.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm hoping for.
I can tell you our C2C comp plan was 75,000, 72,000.
I think that's what you gave me.
Was it? Okay.
And depending, this is a pretty detailed scope of work.
The C2C was 72?
I think it was 72. It was in the seventies. It's been a few years ago.
Now that included a lot of meetings with citizens, lot of meetings.
There was a, there was a strong public engagement aspect.
Yeah.
But in that same vein, less data collection and this is data, data, data-driven heavy.
Yeah, it's a different kind of study.
Right.
And I also just wanna say thank you for the incorporating a couple of areas I wanted to see as part of the RFP as well.
I think you did a great job on this RFP.
Yeah, really did.
Supervisor Merkin had one addition to, but that was a grammatical realignment, so I did not...
Pretty minor, wow, yeah.
Didn't wanna leave you out.
This is, yeah, no, it's very, very good, very comprehensive.
And LeAnn, what do you think about Supervisor Olson's suggestion of adding a mayor or a city clerk or a city council member?
I can reach out. My only concern is depending on who it is, it will be budget time for them as well.
Sure, good point.
And there may be new leadership specifically for mayors too. So I, I can reach out and maybe after today is finished and if there are any incumbents go forward from there.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but they'll at least know that we, you know, asked for that.
I think it's a good idea.
Do you wanna be involved in it?
Yep, I do too.
Anything else? Any other questions? Any other information to share?
I made Lisa laugh.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for directing LeAnn regarding the request for proposal.
I make the motion to direct LeAnn Harder in moving forward with the Housing Study and Needs Assessment for Story County.
I second.
Further discussion? Not, Heddins.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin. Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Consideration of request from Hickory Park for a public utility and private storm sewer easement on a FEMA buyout property. This is yours as well?
This is mine.
Wow.
I lost the, so this is a, one of the first times the board, this board, actually any board has seen anything occurring on a FEMA buyout property. I'm gonna try to find, sorry, trying to go to our website. This is actually, property is located inside the city of Ames. It used to be unincorporated Story County, which is why through the buyout process through FEMA, Story County is the property owner. It's a very small, small piece of ground that used to be a farmstead and for whatever reason, it's interesting, the legal description of the property that Story County owns and it go through a buyout process through FEMA does not really match historical photos for the, where the farmstead was. But I bring that up just so that you see that it does not match. We, we are tied to the legal description for our ownership. Let me zoom in here. So it's along 16, Southeast 16th Street. I have too much stuff, I can't see. So you see this little box right here?
Mm-hmm.
That is this property under consideration. So Tyson's is just north of the property. Is it Deary is down to the southwest. This is Southeast 16th Street, the come and go, and the hotels further to the east. So this, the property ownership, the request that's before you today is to approve an easement for a private storm wa, or storm sewer. Justin Dodge is representing the property owner. This is rather unique in that the county is the property owner. However, fill has been placed on the property without Story County's consent. The property will be returned to its original state as it must be according to the FEMA buyout requirements. And then the curb and the cutout will be removed too, that was placed, right? When Southeast 16th was improved, we cannot allow this to be used for anything other than an easement or open space into perpetuity. We could potentially transfer ownership to the city of Ames. Even the DNR and FEMA is not really comfortable with that, but that is allowed, but it cannot be transferred to private ownership, but we can allow an easement, or Story County can allow an easement. So it's a, just a simple strip of land, again, for 20 feet in width across the parcel. And majority of the parcel is right-of-way already. You can see all that it does go into the center line.
So why was the curb cut put in? What happened?
I think there was an original driveway there, if you look at historical photos. And so when Southeast 16th Street was improved, the city just incorporated it. There's one across the street as well for future development and I'm, I'm sure the city does like to line up existing curb cuts.
So who's gonna replace that curb? Whose cost?
Hunzer, or, yeah.
You're gonna do it? Okay, you, all the cost to return it, you will take care of. Hi, Justin.
How are you guys today?
Good.
Hey, how are you?
Very well. So yeah, we, Justin Dodge, Hunzer, like our companies, representing Hickory Park Inc. We really view this project as a win-win for the, for the county. If you look at the parcel, fill was added over the years by a contractor and so that goes against the county's obligations to FEMA. So we're gonna clean that up. The city, when they did Southeast, or South 16th, stubbed in the driveway, so we're gonna cut that out, replace the curb, restore things, so it'll look a lot better when we're done and it'd be coming back in the good graces with FEMA on the property, so. And even the right-of-way line, if you look at...
It's that purplish pink.
The magenta line there.
Mm-hmm.
So the city of Ames actually has transmission lines and so even the right-of-way line that's depicted here isn't accurate because they've got infrastructure throughout that parcel as well as the transmission line. So what we're asking for is a storm sewer easement on the backside of the city's right-of-way to convey storm sewer, or storm water. In exchange, we'll clean things up and restore it during the season.
Thank you for that, that's great.
And as Justin said, this is resolution of an issue that's been going on for several, several years. I, I appreciate his assistance and gain to this point because there has been a great amount of fill placed there and we've been trying to find a good solution. There is some interesting topography because of the fill and the limited size of this piece and I think the design that's proposed does accomplish all the goals and meets requirements that Story County is bound to as a buyout piece.
So where is the fill going? Just to figure out, who gets the fill next?
And it's not a tremendous amount, but we'll take it back on the Wheelox property.
Okay.
Any other questions? If there are no questions, then I'd entertain a motion. Let's see, what should, I, can you?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the request for the Hickory, the easement by Hickory Park Inc. or to Hickory Park Inc. And that is, yeah, that's the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin. Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Justin, thanks, LeAnn. Good to have one resolved.
She's still with us, so.
She's still with us again. Website linking policy.
She doesn't get a go today. LeAnn's day today.
Okay. What would you like to tell us?
I will talk to you about the website linking policy. If the board recalls, a few weeks ago when Alyssa and I were before the board to talk about social media policy, there was some direction to go back and revisit the website linking policy. There's, there are cross-references in the social media policy to this policy. As follow-up, Alyssa Wiggle and Barb Steinbeck and I met to discuss the website linking policy. It was, it's been in place for a number of, couple, a few years. It's just a general policy that it's meant to address outside entities that wish to have their website... their websites incorporated into the county's website. So the www-storycountyiowa.org website. It's guidance so that as departments and offices are contacted, they have the ability to have criteria in place to determine whether or not it's an appropriate website to which, website link which to incorporate. I did go through the proposed changes are, if language proposed to be removed, it's strikeouts additions are underlined with red. General policy based on Supervisor Olson's, some comments make it more inclusive. So we did remove, based on discussions, the specificity, though, with the economic welfare, tourism and industry and just simply called Story County Government. And then under the policy, we did do some wordsmithing, so it would read a little bit better, and then reference Appendix A, which we did not note it to be Appendix A, which is actually the form that individuals submit. And this is not county staff that submits these forms to me. These are outside entities, again, that wish to have their website link incorporated into our website. And then under the criteria, we did specify other governmental, local governmental agencies and criteria, bullet point number one, and then other links may be considered by the board upon official request, kind of a catch-all for the end. Other additional comments, questions? So today's review starts the seven-day review following action today. We'll get it emailed out and get comments from elected officials and department heads. And then bring it back next week.
I think I caught two more economics that needed to be, get strikeouts down in the text, but other than that, I don't have any comments. Down in, the first one is, the first page here, under policy, under the bullet points, one, two, three, four, five. Number five, it talks about the party with the established relationship which promotes the economic welfare. Did you mean to strike that one out also? Because then it talks about environmental welfare, tourism and/or industry. So it repeats, you know, what, where we are in our categories. But, so we had talked about not limiting to economic. I think it was just not caught. Yeah? And then the other one is moving to the appendix. And it's the same clause, exactly. Yeah. So that was it for me.
Any other questions?
No, I did speak with Leanne earlier just because I was a little confused when I read it initially. Because I was looking at the current links on the site, not someone wanting to link to us. And I know some of the language was already in there. I can send some additional comments to Leanne. They're nothing hugely significant, but just maybe a little wordsmithing.
So you would be looking for a motion to approve the policy and send it out for seven-day review?
Yes, please.
I'd make that motion with the inclusion of the wordsmithing that Supervisor Hens will, will provide to you.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was just a couple suggestions that, sorry, you're making the motion, so it's not time for me to make a comment yet, sorry.
Okay, all right. But anyway, so I would make, I would make the motion that you include Supervisor Hens' wordsmithing comments in the document and then put it out for seven-day review.
I'll second that, yeah. I, I can just say, like, I just had, for example, under general policy where we say Story County Government as well as links to government. It just, it just seemed kind of redundant. You know, just, so if you look at the, that very first part, I know, I know government was already in there, but we're saying Story County Government as well as links to government. Or we're saying to other government, or it may just be additional word that just needs to be in. And I did speak with Leanne ahead of time on that. And, and we kind of agreed that it just was a little wonky right there, so.
Okay, so that's my motion, you know, what's been discussed. You want to change it?
No, with changes.
With changes, all right. All right, there we go.
I think just some clarity on that particular one was kind of my main, my main thing, so.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Approved and sent out for seven-day review with the minor discussion, minor changes that we noted. Okay. And now we go to discussion and consideration of appointment of the Commission on Veterans Affairs for an unexpired term ending June 2020, which is only a few months from now, so, and a three-year term effective 7/1/2020 to 6/30/2023. I'm recommending Monty Woodward for that, for the position. He's one of several people that we interviewed, has an excellent background. I also checked a couple references on him of a former employee who was a county employee as well as a, or a current employee who worked with him and another current employee who currently works with him and received very good feedback on him. So I would entertain a motion to approve him. For VA Commissioner. Unless there's any other thoughts.
I'd make the motion to approve Monty Woodward.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I guess my, my thought here, why I had to think it one last time when I grabbed the file here, is we did have excellent applicants, six of them. And there were at least three who had applied before and had come in again for interviews. And they had presented very different viewpoints and perspectives. And since we can only appoint one, the frustration is trying to keep these other people still involved, still willing to provide their viewpoints to one or all of us, or to the other commission members, et cetera. And I actually had, would have felt comfortable with anyone. And so that's just my comment. I, I hope some people who came in and came in again will, will keep providing that because it's so important that the VA Commission receive a variety of viewpoints.
I appreciate that. And we did have six very well-qualified applicants for only one position, and that does make it difficult. So, thank you for saying that. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, then, Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a community service quarter of the report, Carla Webb. Hi, Carla.
Morning. Hey, this is my quarterly report covering from July 2019 to September 2019. For general assistance, we assisted 26 single households and 18 families for a total of 44. For referrals to other resources in our communities, we had 297 of those individuals or applicants that we referred on to other agencies. We had 15 applicants that did not return. Primary types of assistance for rent was 15,781. Utilities was 979 and 62 cents. And then for other items, the bulk of this is going to be for burial, was $3,986. For substance use services, we paid on four different claims there. For, on the CICS region, we've been very busy, I would say. We did work on updating our 2080 agreement. The governing board approved that in September. We needed to do some updates to that due to legislative requirements in House File 690 for the Children's Behavioral Health System. So we are in the process of forming a Children's Advisory Committee. The governing board has made appointments to that committee. We did receive applications and we're trying to balance it throughout the counties as far as representation in the various different positions that need to be filled. So I think we're still needing a pediatrician to be on that board, but we're, we're working on getting that filled. So we're looking for that board to begin to have their first meeting in November. And then that committee will need to appoint three representatives to the governing board. And we will look for those terms to start in February of 2020. Two of the positions will become voting members on our governing board and one position will be a non-voting member. Also, there's a change in the makeup to the board from our Adult Advisory Committee. The person that's in the position of an individual who utilizes mental health and disability services or is an actively involved relative of such individual will become a voting member on the governing board. Currently, they're non-voting. So that, again, those terms will, and those changeovers to the voting will begin in February. We've been, we've contracted with Irelie Ball Community Mental Health Services to consult with us regarding development of an access center network. Earlier this calendar year, we had held community meetings with stakeholders and at that time it was identified, there was interest in doing a network versus having an access center that is a single building and the services that are required to be located within that building. Because we currently have some of the services that make up that access center available in our region, such as crisis stabilization and that. And we don't want them to have to move that service under one roof. So we're looking at a network type of concept and Irelie Ball is helping us in conceptualizing what that would look like. We are, we've continued to work on transition plans for block grant funding for transitional living center services. This is a service that we fund at 100% and we've identified coming in the near future, sustainability of that is going to be difficult for us at 100%, given the additional services that, that we're going to need to develop and fund. So we've been working with providers on looking at trying to access habilitation funding through Medicaid. We did have center associates that identified they were not interested in becoming a habilitative provider, habilitation services provider. So our governing board did approve for us to give them notice to end our funding as of November 30th. The center associates then identified to us that they would need to close that site on 10/31 due to staffing issues. So we are currently working on trying to get some habilitation services up and going there in Marshall County to help fill that gap in the loss there. We've been looking at financial forecasting and we anticipate needing to increase the per capita levy in FY 2021. We have been spending down our fund balance and so now we're going to need to bring in more revenue in order to continue to cover the services. We anticipate getting to our per capita levy max of $3,550 potentially within four years. The financial forecasting is a little bit challenging because it, it can, it fluctuates based on what your actual expenditures are. So we're doing a lot of projecting in that. So as, as we go forward here, things will become more clear. Currently, we're at 20220. So for FY 21, I imagine during our budget work session, we'll be talking about what the recommendation is going to be to increase that, that per capita levy for '21.
So and, and just to reemphasize, this is a per capita levy of dollars. It's not the rate, the levy rate that would go up that much. But it is about a, it could be as much within a few years, a 60% increase over the levy rate that we have now. It's just that these are not the dollar levy rates.
Yeah.
I do that for the people in the audience right now.
Yep, no, appreciate that.
Genesis Development provided notice to us. This kind of was a two-part process. Initially, they notified us that they would need to close their behavioral health services effective October 4th of 19 due to insurmountable financial challenges. When that was identified, Zion Recovery then worked with the Heart of Iowa Region to come in and take over providing the Hope Wellness Center services in Woodward, which is a crisis stabilization service. That we do have some residents from CICS access. That did impact behavioral health services for us in Green County. And so we are working to get services available there for the outpatient. Secondly, then Genesis notified us that they would be closing all of their disability services effective on October 26th. And those services were assumed by Imagine the Possibilities. So hopefully, no clients have seen a disruption in services. I believe they were retaining many of the employees that Genesis had. For us locally here in Story, that did affect Supported Employment Services as Genesis was providing those here. Imagine has now taken those over. We are looking at transitioning the CICS crisis line to the Your Life Iowa, which is a statewide line. Both of our, our line as well as the Your Life Iowa line are both answered by Foundation Two. So we've been having conversations with them about what could this look like. We will be able to roll over our existing line, so any calls received on the CICS line will just roll over into the Your Life Iowa line and be answered as they are now. So there shouldn't be any loss of calls being answered. We'll continue to contract with Foundation Two for mobile response dispatch services. They currently do that for us. So again, there shouldn't be any disruption in that dispatch. By doing this, we'll start to market the Your Life Iowa line once this changeover takes place. It is a bit of a cost savings for us because we pay for that crisis line monthly right now. So our, our cost will come down, but we'll have to pay for that mobile response dispatch service still now. So we anticipate this looking to take place in January of 2020. So with that change, I would look for new marketing material to come out from CICS. So our cards have been heavily distributed in that, so we'll work to get those replaced. But the good thing is, is even if somebody calls that CICS line, their, their call's going to get answered. And that, it's for an undefined period of time that we can have that happen. So it could be a year, a couple of years. We haven't identified when, when that line would ultimately stop. The CICS Employment Committee continues to meet and discuss regional employment. We have consulted with a MHDS region that is moving to regional employment as of January 2020. Also, the Employment Committee consulted with the attorney retained by CICS. And we are currently looking at considering seeking additional outside consultation services to explore what this could potentially look like in moving towards regional employment. No decisions have been made by the governing board at all. It's more so we're just in seeking information and that, trying to conceptualize what this could potentially look like. Jody Eaton, who is our current CEO, her term will expire June 30th of 20. So the governing board has set a process for appointing a new CEO. And information has gone out to current CICS employees of regarding in the internal application process. So applications are due by December 1 of 2019. The board is looking to complete interviews in January and appoint the new CEO at the January governing board meeting.
I'd like to provide feedback, I guess, to Lisa as our representative on this one, is that I'm always uncomfortable on internal searches where there is no option for external candidates on that. So can someone fill me in about why they would not post for an external?
Um, we, the, the board wanted to look at internal applicants at this time, which is a, something that can be done, is my understanding. If there is no internal applicants interested or that, that the board feels could fulfill that responsibility, then it would look to be posted externally.
So I'm going to come back to, but is that the best for the region? There could be someone from another region who, for some reason, would like to apply for that, so would still have great knowledge about it. I mean, you know, and then there's always external candidates. So. So the vote has already been taken, so did we vote?
I don't know if that was, that was prior to me coming on, or was that right? Because the, the work group has been on it before I came on. I didn't even know who was on the work group or on that particular group.
Thank you.
I was thinking that CEO was hired from the administrative team members. And if you hired a CEO from outside, that adds more expense to the administrative team.
It, it potentially could. We would need to have a county that is willing to employ that CEO because as we don't have regional employment right now, they need, individuals still need to be an employee of a county. So we would need to have a county that stepped in. And that, that could potentially happen if there is no interest.
And it would add an additional salary to the administrative, to CICS, correct?
It, it could potentially, yeah.
So maybe, that was my understanding, because it seemed like it was from the folks who were on the administrative team, that the leadership was selected previously.
And, and the board did decide to open it up for all, all individuals doing CICS work at this time. But previously, the position was appointed from the administrative team positions.
I saw Alyssa come up. So legally, so legally, that's allowed?
We could have it. And then post it.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, we did have staff that participated in the Mental Health Expo that was held in Ames in September. Staff were, worked at a vendor table, and then we also had a staff member in our office who's been involved in the expo committee, and so she assisted with the hosting of the event that evening. Also, just wanted to share with you that I've been appointed to the Iowa Community Services Association Board, and my term will start on January 1 of '20.
Congrats.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. For community services, we've been working with ISAC staff regarding the community services network and looking at the centralized intake concept. We needed to have a database that, that we could work with, that outside agencies that we're working with could have access to, to help us in managing the flow of client applications and that for rental assistance. So ISAC staff did do a mock-up of what this could look like within the CSN system. They presented it at the statewide general assistance retreat where feedback was positive. This database is something that is used by all of the counties, I believe, in Iowa, but one county. So this could open it up for use by, by many general assistance programs or even our MHDS programs. The mock-up was then discussed at the CSN Operations Committee, which Erin and I attended as well and discussed our vision for this process. And so the Operations Committee approved for ISAC to move forward on it. They had to take it to another internal committee, which I learned last week approved as well for them to continue to work on this. So next step is for ISAC, they've got several projects, the staff that work on CSN that they need to work on. So they're going to put together a timeframe on when they will get to this project and then they'll get back to me on when they see it being implemented. We would look to be one of the testing entities for this. And what the, what the vision would be is, as someone who is, who is needing rental assistance or utility assistance, they would make application with our office. We'd be that starting point, which we are now for most folks applying. And then we would enter that application into the community services network. If we're able to assist through general assistance, we would just process that application through and provide the assistance. If, if we're not able to assist, or if they need more than what we can do, we'll be able to blast out a, a message to our local providers through CSN. They can get into the system. They'll be able to look at, information will be protected, but there is a certain level of security that they'll then be able to see certain parts of the CSN system. And then they can make a determination on, are they able to assist? And then there will be a function within the system that they can respond back into and pledge their assistance. We're working through their ability then to be able to pull down like a landlord rental verification form, a W-9 form and that, so that they still have access to those documents that they need for processing any type of, of payment. So things are moving forward. It's, it's taking time and that, but it's, it feels like it's starting to come together.
You've been very persistent on this. Thank you.
You bet. Yep, we're looking forward to it. Staff from our office continue to remain involved with the OPA task force, the Nevada Substance Use Task Force, the Mental Health Expo Committee, Human Services Council in Two Rivers Region. We continue to attend county trainings when possible. And Erin Rehertz as CBSO completed 138 interviews with veterans or surviving spouses this past quarter.
I have a question about the Human Services Council. I've heard that there's maybe some discussion about disbanding it?
Yeah, they, they are looking at kind of changing the, the structure potentially. I think through time, they've struggled with getting individuals to be able to fill some of like the executive committee positions and that. So my understanding of what they're looking at going towards is still they would be, they would still meet. I don't know if it's on a monthly basis or quarterly. I'd have to go back and look at that. Still do information sharing and that kind of thing, but it wouldn't be as structured as it is right now. But still have the ability for folks to come together, agencies to come together.
Thank you.
You bet. Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
You bet.
We do not have any other reports. Does anybody want to suggest any upcoming agenda items that would get scheduled? We're going to have a Storycom update, I think, near the end of the month, but after one more meeting. So I'll be getting that on the agenda.
Thank you. I know you've been called off a couple different meetings on this, in and out.
We're still working, we're still working on finalizing budgets. A lot of things are moving targets right now, but we're working on it. And any other agenda items anybody has? Okay. Then I will open public forum number two for comments from the public on items not on the agenda. So if there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please move to the microphone. Seeing nobody moved to the microphone, I will close public forum number two. And liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Who would like to go first?
I'll let you go first, Laura.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to start with a big thank you once again. The MICA and Salvation Army Food Pantries both texted me and said, "Thank you very much for the items donated," and they went on the shelves immediately. So thank you to staff and, and all the employees, et cetera. Okay. I have been elected Vice President of Community and Family Resources Board of Directors. I'm circulating the annual report with, among the supervisors right now. Of note, the Story County residents make up 41% of the, basically 1,100 adults they saw for mental health treatment services in the last year, and 18% of the 1,900 people they saw for addiction treatment services. And they also have locations in Boone, et cetera, for Calhoun, Hardin, Humboldt, Pocahontas, Webster Counties. And interestingly enough, 4% of the clients come from Pope County. So also, we received the auditors' report. It was an unquali, unqualified, which is the best you can get. And there was a net increase in assets of $160,000, even with the Richmond Center operating in the red. And so I have asked the CFR staff to just put together some information that I can then give to community services and the Board of Directors, just to understand about, just like we know, you know, that our community health center is really struggling about get those revenues or whatever, that there are other agencies who are not asset funded who are still basically relying upon other counties, money from other counties or other programs to subsidize mental health. So I have been elected Chief Lead Elected Officer of the new 11-county local development area for the Workforce Innovations and Opportunities Act, which is, of course, federal money that comes and flows down through Iowa Workforce Development. It's Title I funding for retraining for displaced, low-income adults, and also for low-income and at-risk teens. Now, interestingly enough, after that happened last week, and it was all done via email, all right, because we don't have a 2080 in place. The 2080 is with our legal counsel, Ethan Anderson, right now to look over, and it has to be looked over by the other 10 counties. So this was basically each county's representative saying, yes, you know, "Loris, we want you to do this." Well, now the Iowa Workforce Development has come out and they have called a meeting for November 20th for any supervisors throughout the state who are on this committee, appointed as the rep, to come to Des Moines and talk about maybe re-dividing the regions. So this growth opportunity continues to grow. So anyway, went to the McCall'sburg City Council last night with Destin Ingram, as I mentioned earlier, and we looked at, you know, really got down in what kind of opportunities might they have in working with Destin or with housing and what they need to do on that. Upcoming this week, I'll be on Story City's Annual Economic Development Tour on tomorrow night. I passed along an email to you guys about that, I think, last week or about, somewhere in the last week to 10 days. Okay, all right. So we're touring EB and then the Story City Business Center. I've got more training for the Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act on Thursday, and I'll be at the Nevada Task Force, the Roundtable on Alcohol. I have the Ames Economic Development Commission Executive Committee Meeting on Friday morning. We're going to review the draft of the, of their budget, but I think more important is that we're going to review the draft of the strategic plan. And then I anticipate it'll get referred to the entire board then, and you guys are welcome, you know, to go to that meeting with the board and if, to maybe provide input or hear what the people have to say, you know, the other board members on that. So, and I'm going to do, go to the Petco Animal Adoption Event for the shelter on Friday for something fun to do. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, so I've done it again, and I need to, I need to have IT, so I've, I've got my calendar on my computer versus my iPad, so I'm going to go by memory, and so there may be something you have or someone else has on their, on their calendar that'll, that'll trigger me. I did want to make a comment that I did meet with Nancy Carroll on Friday to just kind of get an idea of what Heartland's kind of, senior services is kind of looking at, especially since the Healthy Life Center did not pass. They're still doing some review on that. They have no idea at this particular time. They do know that they need a larger space. They also recognize that, you know, the city needs their, their pool, that Mary Greeley needs their therapy pool. I think they're all kind of looking at their own things or potentially something way scaled back, but she just wanted to let me know that they, they are unsure at this particular time. And certainly would be talking with us, certainly providing us some information if they had a direction that they were going to be potentially going.
I remember when they're going through the Healthy Life Center discussions, they were talking about Heartland had a certain amount of money set aside for a new building. Do you recall? Did she say what that was?
I don't recall what the amount was, and stuff at the, at the top of my head. So I, I don't. I think it was over $2 million, though. That was money, you know?
I was thinking $2 to $3 million.
Yeah, yeah, and I've got it in my notes. I don't remember for sure, so I don't want to speak incorrectly there. They liked the location of being downtown just because there's so many other things that folks can access to. And so that's just, you know, other things that they're just taking, they're, they're just kind of taking a breather rate at the moment and then kind of regrouping and relooking at, at what they can do. So I wanted to just update you on that. This afternoon, I will be out, more on a personal thing. I have to review for my son social security, and I've been told I will be on the phone for a couple hours, so.
Lucky you.
I will be, I will be at home taking care of that phone call. Tomorrow, I have a 9:00 AM meeting with Wayne Clinton, and then I have, looks like we have an asset interview in the afternoon. So I'll be in after my morning meeting. And Thursday, we have a, I think it's an emergency operations, or at least I have that on Thursday, and not sure if I have something in the morning because I, nothing's on my calendar for Thursday, so I'm looking at it. And then Friday, I do have de-cap meeting, and we're going to be going over several contracts and stuff that's going on. Funds to be distributed out. Oh, and the one thing I did want, I think I mentioned it last month, is while this is a couple weeks ahead, MICA's meeting is going to be on the 21st versus, we usually do it on the 4th Monday night. We're doing it on a Thursday night. It's their annual meeting. That's the same day as CICS. And then would also be for Central Iowa Recovery, that particular day in the afternoon, but our 60 days is up from our, leaving our 2080 agreement, so I will no longer be on the CIR Board.
Okay. Okay. I think you solved a mystery for me because I had EOC on for Thursday afternoon as well and thought, didn't we do that last week?
We did, but I think this is, because I did ask Melissa on that, and I believe it's different than.
Okay.
I think the first one was the introduction, and this is more the actual operations of it. And Loris is nodding her head as I am accurately recalling that.
Thursday afternoon, good. Okay, so I'll be there as well. What, let's see, what, we are continuing to interview and select board and commission members. I think we have asset interviews coming up as well as planning and zoning and board of adjustments. So hopefully by the end of the year, we will have all our board and commission appointments filled, except of course, the Condemnation Commission. And if anybody ever wants to serve on the County Condemnation Commission, we have plenty of room on that one because it's huge. We've been working with the Mission Statement Project and will continue to. And I also am on a new board. I was asked to do so personally. It's a Story County College Access Network, or S-C-A-N. It's a local college access network project. It's a grant, I think United Way received. The goal basically is to increase college access for kids who normally don't go to post-secondary and figure out how to get them in a better shape to get post-secondary education and get into the workforce. I'm very excited about it, probably mostly because of personal experiences that I've had, some family members have had, plus the fact that I worked in corrections for so long, and I saw what happened when kids do not make that successful transition, you know, or don't stay in education, don't graduate, don't get that successful transition to the workforce. So I'm very excited about being asked to be on that. Also attended a Storycom meeting yet again, and we continue to move forward on that. We still are, I don't have all of our tower sites for next year. We have our temporary sites, but we're still working on one permanent site. And we'll talk more about how we're going to, how that, we will transit from our current system to our new public safety communication system later on in November. Attended a Conservation Commission, a Conservation Board meeting last night. They're working on their capital improvements plan for the next decade. They, they're long-term planners, I will tell you that, and they've got a lot on their plate. They've got a lot of things going on, a lot of good land acquisitions, and also working on their operating budget for, for next year. Next Monday, I'll go to, I'll go attend the Story County OPA task force and also the Story County Juvenile Justice Committee. So we've all got lots of things we're doing out in the community right now and lots of things that we're doing inside Story County Government, so.
Just a clarifying question. The county offices are closed on Monday, the 11th. Is that correct for Veterans Day?
Correct. Yes, yes, we are closed on the 11th.
So next, so next Monday, we would be closed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would mean that we need to get agenda items to Shelley.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, as in tomorrow. Wednesday, as in tomorrow.
Right.
Oh.
At 3:00.
Okay. Agenda items, everybody, Wednesday, tomorrow at 3:00 to Shelley. Thanks for bringing that up. I would have forgotten about that. Anything else?
I just want to thank the Auditor's Office, because today is the big day of another election, okay? And good luck to all the candidates. I know not everybody can win, but it's, we all know it's hard to run, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much, everybody.